Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, let's call this meeting for two twenty-two twenty-one to order with the Spark City Council. And let's start with the roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Baby. Here. There.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
City Manager Poots.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have Pastor Steve Bond here with the Summit Christian Church.
I'm bringing him over right now, sir.
Welcome Pastor. There he is.
How's everybody?
Wonderful.
Good.
Okay. Well, you're on.
Okay, let me pray. Father in heaven, you know, this has been a an extremely challenging season to be in leadership at any level. But our city leaders have had to navigate the COVID crisis. And they've done a splendid job, Father, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for the patience and wisdom that they've demonstrated throughout this past year or so. And as things begin to shift in a more positive direction, Father, I pray that as they make decisions each week, almost each day, that you would fill them with wisdom and unity. And Father, it seems in this season, no one in leadership will make everyone happy. But Father, I pray that they would work together as a team, even in today's meeting. And that the net result would be that they would move as one and that our city would be blessed with just greater and greater prosperity. I know there's many challenges, Father, not only the COVID challenges, but rapid development and always scarce resources and difficult decisions to made to be made. So grant them wisdom, I do pray, and I and I thank you, Father, for the people that you have appointed to lead in our city. I specifically ask, Father, that they would, each of them feel a sense of your pleasure in their lives as they exercise this great responsibility. And I pray, Father, that they would find joy in the service that you've called into. And again, thank you for the privilege of praying for them, and I pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you, sir.
Awesome.
All right, let's move on to three point two pledge of allegiance. Let's go with Mr. Abbott.
Got it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Got it on the do-over. All right. Clerk, will you, let's go to public comment and start with our disclaimer, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company to provide your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and twelve point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand feature on your computer or tablet when you will be called up on to speak one at a time by the name or the telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for a public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendas. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if you would like to participate in public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And while we're waiting for that, Mr. Mayor, we did receive an email public comment in.
Okay, let's go ahead and read that into the record.
Dear Spark City Council and Mayor Lawson, yesterday, the Las Vegas Review reported that Nevada's positive coronavirus testing rates have again fallen below ten percent. Out of the three hundred and one reported new cases, two hundred and forty-two of those were in Clark County. I'm curious as to what the Spark City Council is doing to get our businesses, schools, and churches operating at capacity again. What efforts are you making to get the people who elected you back to work, academia and worship services? Numerous states like South Dakota, Tennessee, Florida, and Texas implemented a far more conservative COVID response with no greater consequences to the public. I'm not going to argue whether our governor's approach was more appropriate, but the safety restrictions he imposed upon us have been in place for nearly a year. Why is the City of Sparks not demanding that we be allowed to fully resume our lives and activities? Not only has the governor continued to dictate how our residents make a living, educate their children, and serve God, but he has allowed our public officials to hide behind the COVID curtain and take no responsibility for the public angst. So again, what is the Spark City Council doing to pers- preserves the economic livelihood and spiritual well-being of their constituents? The government has used this pandemic to all but silence the people's voices. The opportunity to address our public officials face-to-face has been eliminated, and censorship is stifling much of the truth. Because of this, the public relies upon officials such as yourselves to speak for us. Is there not one of you who possesses the courage to stand up and say enough? Are you simply going to conduct yourselves as though everything is fine and wait for the governor's next order? Or will you do the job the public elected you to do and actively address their needs? City Hall belongs to the people and it needs to be open. The city council was elected by the people of Sparks to serve on their behalf, not to hide behind face masks and Zoom. Shameful. Thank you. E. Sotelo.
Okay. Did we have any public comment during your time?
Showing no additional public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for approval of the agenda. Any additions, subtractions? We've got a first by Councilman Dare, second by
Second Abbott.
Anderson.
No, sorry.
Is his hand faster than you, Donald? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Six point one minutes consideration possible approval of the minutes of the concurrent meeting for January twentieth twenty twenty-one, the Sparks and the Spark City Council meeting for February eighth twenty twenty-one. Any additions, subtractions? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, do those need to be in two separate or can I do them in one?
I'll defer to our lawyer.
Let's do them individually, please, Councilman. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll do the first one. I move to approve the minutes of the concurrent meeting for January twentieth twenty twenty-one. I'll second that, Baby.
Second by Baby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Abbott, you wanted to make the motion for the second minutes?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the Spark City Council meeting for February eighth.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and on to announcements, presentation, recognition, items, and items of special interest. And Mr. Dare, I've asked if you would read this first one, seven point one. And Mr. Abbott, I'm going to ask you to read seven point two for Christie, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. All right, Mr. Dare.
Very good. Here we go. Whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, "Social Workers Are Essential," embodies the heroic contributions of the social work profession to our state, evidenced by the support social workers have provided to children, individuals, families, and communities affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas social workers in healthcare serving on the front lines during the pandemic have provided crisis intervention, support, and hope to patients and their loved ones facing uncertain outcomes and substantial grief. And whereas social, so, school social workers have worked with children and families throughout the pandemic to ensure students reach their full academic and personal potential. And and whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help people overcome substance use disorders and mental illnesses which have been excavated by the pandemic. And whereas social workers serving in child welfare have risked their own health during this pandemic to ensure the safety and well-being of Nevada's children, which includes responding to and assessing reports of abuse and neglect. And whereas social workers have played and continue to play a crucial role in responding to the COVID nineteen pandemic in Nevada, especially in the areas of healthcare, child welfare, mental health, education, and supporting vulnerable populations. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-one as Social Work Month. Yay!
And Mr. Mayor, we do have Shawna Elto on the line for you.
Welcome. Please say a few words.
Thank you so much. So first, I wanted to thank the Spark City of Council for this honor and for acknowledging the extraordinary work done by our community's social workers. Each year, March is nationally recognized as Social Work Month, and this year's theme is "Social Workers Are Essential." And as we reflect on the many challenges faced by Nevadans over the past year from the pandemic, it's apparent the vital roles social workers play. The social work profession plays in our community from providing resources and support to inspiring hope despite so much uncertainty during unprecedented times. It is apparent that social workers truly are essential. So thank you to our community's social workers, Nevada's social workers, and happy Social Work Month in March, and thank you again, Spark City Council, for this honor.
Thank you. And yes, we've seen this in the last year, just how vital you guys are. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to seven point two, Mr. Abbott.
Here I go. So I'm apologize to you, Christie. I only ever learned to say your last name, so. Whereas Christie Kakarogolu, we're gonna say Christie C. from then on, became the executive director of Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, also North K T M B, in two thousand and two to serve the Trucking Meadows region by establishing educational programs, conducting community cleanups, and combating the growing problems of illegal dumping in our communities open spaces. And whereas in two thousand and two, Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful had one and one-half employees and about three hundred community volunteers. And whereas, under the direction of Miss C., Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful rose to the occasion as the City of Sparks experienced incredible growth. And Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful now coordinates over five thousand volunteers and enthusiastic and committed staff of nine full and part-time employees. And whereas since two thousand and two, Miss C. and K T M B employees and volunteers have logged over a hundred and thirty-three thousand volunteer hours, recycled over a hundred and eighty-one thousand Christmas trees, and cleaned our open spaces of two thousand tons of trash and waste. And whereas through our contagious enthusiasm and determination, Miss C. and K T M B have made considerable progress towards halting illegal dumping, established strong business partnerships through the City of Sparks and the Trucking Meadows region, organized annual fundraising events like Raise the River that helped provide for cleaner, more sustainable communities, and participated in One Trucking River Initiative, a successfully community collaboration that helps keep the Trucking River a beautiful natural gem to be cherished by the citizens of Sparks. And where- whereas during Miss C.'s nineteen years at the helm of K T M B, the organization has beautified the City of Sparks, and her presence in our community has made the Trucking Meadows a better place for all of us. And whereas when Miss C. accepted the executive director position, she took on a mission, not just a job. Whereas after nineteen years of tireless leadership and services, Miss C. will retire on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, the City of, Mayor of the City of Sparks, joined the city council in expressing sincere appreciation of the important with of important work of Christie Kakarogolu. Try it one more time.
Okay, so who can pronounce Christie's last name correctly?
No. Is Christie? I don't look bad.
I'm not showing her on, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Well, hopefully she doesn't see that rendition of the water remain, but.
I appreciate you, Pop, giving me that one.
Yeah, actually, I just want to take a moment and the the one section in there that says she has a contagious enthusiasm and determination. Truly, I believe that's what caused K T M B to succeed in this region and for her to have such a great impact. We're gonna miss her dearly, but she's she set up a wonderful program. I'm sure it's gonna continue to do well, even in her absence. But she's an awesome woman and just so so glad that she's been able to help our community the way she has.
Yep, she's done an awesome job. Yeah, Miss Baby.
I just want to echo Councilman Anderson's comments, and if you weren't excited about Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, when you met her, you became excited. And she just, her her energy and and her passion was something that just rallied the troops, grew the program, was so beneficial for the community. But she was one of those people that in life that you want to work with and you want to do things for and with because it was just a contagious energy that made you feel good and you knew you were doing the right thing, but you felt good doing that and and we need more people like that in our community because she truly made a difference. So just want to thank her for nineteen amazing years and wish her best of luck in her new adventures. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll try and look quick if I can, Pop.
Go ahead.
Um, we don't want to shut out Christie. I think we all, everyone said it already, but you know, the, we all volunteered. I think we've all been to Raise the River, an ozone Christmas tree recycling, park cleanups, and especially the park cleanups. That helps with our public work staff and the hours that are that, you know, I always do rock probably spread mulch and those things, just things that us as volunteers that want to give back and community members were able to do and beautify our city together. And she's definitely the reason that she brought us all together. We had to meet a lot of cool people and and definitely shout out to Christie, and I'm sorry for butching your name over and over today.
Mr. Dare.
I I just want to say obviously, thank you, and we can say those same remarks, but I just want to say that our commitment to the Trucking River and this group is is gonna continue to grow. And so just they'll end up putting somebody else in there and that will all roll forward. And we will please just know if you want to get involved, there's so many areas that you can, but this is a fantastic group to support. And we will continue. I know our Rotarians do a lot of work with them as well, but we'll continue to just keep pushing forward. But our river is such an important part of what we do in our city, and we want to make sure we care for it. But they did, she did a fantastic job.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Christie, for your service. Okay, let's move on to items seven-three and seven-four, Mr. Poots.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the council. For the record, Neil Poots, your city manager, here to announce three vacancies across two of our boards. The first two are on our Building Code Board of Appeals. We have two vacancies there for terms that will run through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Each of these positions can either be a registered architect or a builder or superintendent of building construction. We're looking for ten years of experience in all of those qualifications, five of which need to have been in responsible charge of the work. These applications for those positions will be accepted through March tenth at five P M. Item seven point four is for a partial term vacancy on our on our planning commission. That term will run through December thirty-first of this year. Applications will be accepted for that vacancy until Friday, March twelfth at five P M. If you're interested in applying for any of these three positions, the best way to apply is to go to our website, Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commissioner Committee, fill out the form, and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Okay. Let's move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to take a consent item out of order? If not, we're looking for a motion. Miss Baby.
I move to approve consent items eight point one and eight point two.
Okay, looking for a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Vanderwell.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to nine point one, general business. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Committee from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Lisa Bonney, Mark Harris, Eric Juarez, Esmin Lozano, Kelly Lucetti, Megan Meier. And the one I chose was Lisa Bonney. So looking for a motion? Or not?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Councilman Anderson, and second by Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Nine point two, and welcome aboard, Lisa. We are looking for big things. Nine point two, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the Sparks Police Department's purchase for the Vertre- Vertra Training Simulator in the amount of eighty-four thousand ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. Chief.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon and council. For the record, I am your chief of police, Chris Crawford. You have seen this now three times, so just going through the processes. We first asked for your approval to apply for a JAG grant to pay for the majority of the funding for this. Came to you last month for the acceptance of the money, and I think I will leave you alone after this meeting with approval for us to actually go out and purchase it. That's what is before you today is actual authorization to purchase that equipment. As it says in there, sixty-nine thousand is coming from a grant. The remainder is within the police department budget to cover the remaining costs. And if you have any other questions, I'm here for you.
Questions from the council? Okay. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
I'm looking to approve the purchase of the Vitra Train Simulator in the amount of eighty-four thousand ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Don't forget the fifteen cents. Looking for a second?
Second then.
Second by Councilman Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to see that thing in action some, when you guys get it. I'd love to see you guys training on it.
Have that on the agenda for you, for sure.
Perfect, thank you. All right, nine point three, consideration of possible action on a request to direct city manager to initiate changes to section twenty point zero three point zero three zero, outdoor processing and S M C twenty point zero three point zero four zero, temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow temporary crushing operations on or near residentially zoned land when associated with approved projects. Okay, Mr. Rundle.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Good afternoon to you and to the Spark City Council, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager. Councilman Dare, recently, you requested the city manager bring back an item in front of the council for the opportunity to consider directing the city manager to amend the outdoor processing component of the Sparks Municipal Code. Why would we amend outdoor processing, many of you may be asking? Well, this is the section that governs rock crushing. This includes rock, rock crushing when it's on site for an area that's being developed for new development. As a site is graded for an approved project, the equipment goes out there, grades the site, rocks come up, they take those rocks over, and they ultimately try to process them on site to to minimize them so they they so that they can put them down, back down on the site. And Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd like to share my screen with a picture of a rock crusher that is out on a commercial site, which is currently permitted.
Right in.
Okay. Is that picture showing up on your screen?
Yes.
So in the bottom left corner, just for scale, you can see that's a standard half-ten, I think, pickup truck. And so this, that is a, that is a rock crusher that is currently being utilized on a commercial zoned parcel that does not have proximity to residential. Now I'll stop sharing my screen. So the municipal code currently restricts this type of operation from occurring on land that's zoned residential or within five hundred feet of residentially zoned land. Amending the municipal code could permit developers to crush native rock on site as part of their grading and other site preparation for construction of the residential project that that has been approved. Recently, the development community has requested staff permit temporary onsite rock crushing. Land developers maintain that the onsite rock crushing speeds completion of their project by increasing productivity. Offsite rock crushing also creates an issue for the city in that it it adds tractor trailer trips or semi-truck trips on our local streets. But unfortunately, because the project sites that they recently requested to do this at our zone residential, staff has no mechanism to be able to approve the temporary use, which brings us here today. Councilman Lawson, I think your direction is a mechanism to find the way to say yes, and staff believes that this is that mechanism bringing it in front of you today. Now, I want to mention that the, this current prohibition to rock crushing is by design. During the development of the two thousand and fifteen zoning code, through community outreach, outdoor processing was identified as being highly impactful when it is in proximity to residential. So since that time, that however, since that time, the city has annexed lands at the periphery of the urbanized area. So maybe now it is appropriate to permit a use like this, where staff would have the ability to review it on a case-by-case basis and utilize a tool such as the temporary use permit to condition and potentially approve it. The city council could initiate the process of granting staff the flexibility to permit outdoor processing by directing the city manager to initiate changes to the municipal code for outdoor processing. Additionally, amending the temporary use section of the municipal code could provide that tool to permit onsite processing when associated with an approved project when it's in proximity to residential. And some of you may remember, I think, Councilman Anderson, a year or two ago, you requested staff to do an amendment to the temporary use permits and allow for outdoor R V sales, and we've done that use over at the marina. But the temporary use permit permits these kinds of activities, Christmas tree sales, farmers' markets, model home complexes. And again, something like the outdoor R V event that occurs over at, maybe it was Wild Waters. Since an amendment of this nature could have unforeseen consequences, staff recommends that if the council directs the manager to proceed with drafting these types of amendments, that that they provide direction on in on a on a community outreach or a community engagement process to ensure we get that input from our community members on what type of impacts there could be with allowing this type of use on a temporary basis in proximity to residential. This would ensure that transparency that Sparks is is always so good at and ensure that other stakeholders that are important get the opportunity to provide input and not just the development community. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, in two thousand and fifteen, as I just said, Sparks comprehensively revised the zoning code, or what we call Title Twenty of the Sparks Municipal Code. The mayor and city council have had done a very good job of ensuring those regulators, regulations are maintained, updating, and essentially, we have a living document that responds to market conditions through several specific amendments that we've done in the last few years. In addition to those changes, staff maintains a list of possible amendments. This includes, for example, zoning standards to facilitate a missing middle housing, revisions to definitions, hillside development standard amendments. And this may be an opportunity to include staff's list of possible amendments as it's reached a point where it may be appropriate to review the Title Twenty in its entirety and essentially conduct that outreach to stakeholders and the general public to ensure we are able to include all of those comments. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions from the council? Mr. Dare?
I want to, I thank you for bringing this forward for conversation, and one of the things I do think is important is that we continue to make sure we protect our community in the areas of how this functions, and so this is, I like, I like the parameters, I like that there's a process. I even really do appreciate that you put on there a, a public comment portion on that, that we can kind of, we can hear back. For me, I want to, it's always a goal for us that I, I believe is that we're trying to create a great place where people can, can live, but then also the businesses and construction things can move forward in a correct manner. There's a balance that can be found, and I, I think in some of these uses, it would not affect or harm the, the people surrounding it. But I do think it's important to have some parameters on that, because I don't think this would fit in every situation. It'd have to be on those bases and making sure that it would work. So, thank you for bringing it forward, and I don't have any questions, I think I understand it.
Go ahead.
I'm, in following up on Mr. Rundle's comments regarding that community development now has a list of possible changes that keep coming forward, and there could be a possibility that we need to open Title Twenty again. It hasn't been opened or adjusted, I mean, in changed in its full entirety since two thousand and fifteen, and I think our community and everything else has been forever changing, and we have an increase in all sorts of things, and it almost looks like, and may I ask you, Mr. Rundle, are we starting, is the city starting to get more and more requests to amend certain, or a request for just, for us to take a look at Title Twenty?
Yes, I would say that they are, that the council has recently received to, we recently received the request on the construction hours. We were receiving the requests now for the outdoor processing amendments. We, the council recently reviewed rezoning requests up in the Five Bridges Project because our code didn't essentially permit the product that is kind of newer to the region, and and so we do have some new things coming up, that, that, my opinion, Councilwoman Vanderwell, this was what our municipal code did very well in two thousand and fifteen and continues to do is respond to those market conditions in the fashion that the council provided direction at this time and, and has maintained. So, my long answer to your question is very simply, yes.
Okay, can I, I don't know who to ask, do I ask Mr. Crutts or do I ask Mr. Rundle? What do we have to initiate to possibly open Title Twenty to update it, to all of the ever-changing things that are happening?
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, Councilwoman Vanderwell, I believe we did put an alternative in the staff report that would provide you that opportunity to provide, Mr. Crutts, with the direction to include the component that we specifically outlined today, but also open up Title Twenty for various amendments that that we see, that staff sees fit to ensure we are having, have that new working document, that living document. I don't have a list prepared for you of what those amendments would be, but we do have an internal list. But I just believe that direction to the manager to, to open up Title Twenty and include what is outlined today as outdoor processing in those amendments.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Bybee, and then Mr. Dare?
I would agree with Councilwoman Vanderwell on there being the need six years later to look at Title Twenty and what to address changes, but for a business community, for a residential community market changes, I think that makes sense. I guess my question would be, how long do you envision an update would take versus on this particular item? I, I think, I guess how ti- if we just did this particular item, would there be a difference in how much time? I would guess it would be shorter for just this item, although I will say on this item, the public engagement piece, I couldn't approve this without public engagement, and it's not just public comment. I, I think about this location, and I worry about people that are over the top of that ridge that are already concerned about the development, Five Bridges going in, so people that are within enough proximity for the noise, which I'm sure is substantial for the dust impacts, and we, the public engagement piece, I think is going to be very important, and on that dust and noise, we still have, as we would look at a temporary use permit, we still have within our codes, we still have limits, don't we, on dust and on noise that any, any development has to abide by? It, am I correct on that or not?
Yes, that, we do have, have those type of standards in place for noise and dust mitigation, including district health standards that they are involved significantly when it comes to dust issues. So they are all approved through those dust mitigation concerns, and if there's issues, we very quickly get out there on them, even on weekends, we have responded to dust issues on project sites, Councilwoman Bybee.
And I'm guessing, Jim, you'd also be looking at, as you determine the temporary use permit for, say, for the crushing operations, not just the public engagement, but you'd be looking at criteria like distance, how close is it to the residential? Because I know there was a request for crushing right at the top of my hill here in the new townhouse, where they're building the new townhouse, which obviously is in the middle of a neighborhood that's totally surrounded by people living there, and that's not appropriate, and I would agree that. So as you would look at temporary use permits would be very different from one location that's on the periphery to something that's closer to business, to schools, to, those would all be criteria you would determine in the criteria for temporary use permit as you move forward, as you looked at how we could do this and make it work.
And of course, in a semantics terms, Councilwoman Bybee, I would, the team would research that if the manager directed us to, and we would propose standards for the city council to approve what those standards would be, and they would have that opportunity. So at the end of the day, I wouldn't approve them, but the council, of course, would, and ensuring that we had mitigated the types of impacts that you were just outlining.
Right, and, and I totally understand the, the benefits of it, not having those trucks, as many trucks on our roads, the, you know, that, I, I understand from a development perspective, being able to do that onsite is important, so I get the benefits on that side. But I also, as long, you know, I want to make sure that we are really looking at, you know, what mitigations we could have to allow it to happen, it would not be disruptive or to residential nearby or businesses nearby, and that we were pretty clear, clear cut on that, but I do, I, I do support what Councilwoman Vanderwell already mentioned on looking at Title Twenty as a whole and including the crushing operations as part of that, and directing the manager to look at how we would go about doing that, thank you.
Councilman Dare?
Yeah, the question also that Councilwoman Bybee brought up, I'm interested in his timing. We ended up opening up twenty twenty, put this as part of it, are we talking now, this is down the road, so the need that, the reason this came up would not be usable, because we have to take time to do this larger studies. Is there a way to do this thing separate, or does it have to be all together, or does that matter?
Councilman Dare, I think it does matter, I think that there's an opportunity for the council to direct both. If it is included, by both, I mean, amendments to the Title Twenty as a whole and an amendment to the outdoor processing and temporary use permit component. The timing would, is affected, it, if, 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 if the council does direct the manager to, to move forward with an amendment on outdoor processing, and that is subsequent to an additional motion or something, or, or a direction. We can move it quicker i- if it's by itself than if it is tied up with the overall changes to the municipal code. I don't have a timeline on the municipal code overhaul, but I would anticipate with a public engagement component and the, the involvement of stakeholders, that we would probably be at a six-month process. Depending on the public outreach component for outdoor processing, that could take some time, but that would be far shorter than the six months in terms of a public outreach component, a planning commission meeting, and then public hearings at city council, because it's just not so inclusive. So, a public outreach meeting for one, for one item would, would potentially be, be less involved. But I do want to point out to Councilwoman Bybee's point, as, as you begin to involve the public, for example, Councilwoman Bybee, you said the public in proximity to the Five Bridges Project. They may very well bring up concepts that we hadn't considered, there may be a necessity to go back to the public. It, it's disingenuous to go to the public, get input, and then just move forward with something anyway, so during the Title Twenty amendments in two thousand and fifteen, I went to the public numerous times and to the different stakeholders until we ultimately reached some type of consensus or had information to validate what we were moving forward with, and I think Mayor Lawson, maybe you were one of the few on the board at the time, and at the city council meeting that time, we didn't have anybody contesting that overhaul to the Title, Title Twenty. So we would want to make sure, Councilman Dare, as we go to the public, that if there is, there is an opportunity to potentially have to go back, to go back or, or ensure that it is a genuine transparent process.
And I, and I have no question that that's what we need to do, in the sense of having that, but there's a bit of a difference between having a genuine process for an item, to the extent we're talking. We could be a year later, you know, I mean, who knows, six months, whatever, this, this thing, and so I would ask for styles for it, that we, we do move forward, actually, I'd say on both of them, giving direction, and one could have its life of its own and not feel like anything's there, and then what seems to be potential need now could be addressed in a timely manner, but I say a timely manner, the right amount, to make sure that we're safe and our community gets, I mean, all those things we said, I think those go without question and are important. And so, and in the end, it's a request for us to walk forward, and it will have a time of its own, we know. I don't think we have to have a deadline on it, I don't think we need to promise any of that, because we, we don't know. But I still don't think if we package it up where it's such a big item, then we, we, then we do know that the clients who have asked for this, we pretty much, it's not going to be something that helps them by any means, and that wouldn't make sense to me either.
I think that the councilman there, that, that would be, that is correct, I should, I mean, I, I agree with that opinion. In timing, in terms of timing.
So.
Ms. Bybee?
So Jim, if we were just to, if we were to separate them, because I think the amendments for Title Twenty, I think, are called for at this time, but if we were to separate the crushing operations on its own and ask for, and I would insist on public engagement as a part of that, how does that affect staff time if we're going to public engagement for just the crushing operation? And what the timeline estimate would be if we just did the crushing operation with the public engagement? But as far as staff, staff would be going public engagement twice if we do the Title Twenty. I mean, the Title Twenty would take longer for sure, but does that increase our staff time much? And what would be the timeline for just the crushing operation with public engagement that you estimate?
Councilwoman Bybee, I'm not sure, and I entirely understood what, what your question is, are you asking, do we have the staff time to process both amendments?
Just how much additional time if we're doing public engagement for the crushing operations, and then we separately do Title Twenty, and we need public engagement process as part of that? It's two different public engagement pieces, and I didn't know if that made a difference for additional staff time, and I kind of wanted an estimate, if we just did the crushing operations with public engagement, how soon that could possibly happen?
Okay, the, yes, it is more time to do, to do both the, the public engagement component or stakeholder engagement component, if we were just doing one would, would be, I don't know how many meetings, but it would be far more inclusive, so the meeting would likely take, let's say we set up a handful of meetings, they may be an hour apiece of, for three meetings, if we're doing an entire overhaul of the Title Twenty, whereas if we're just doing amendment to the outdoor processing and then coming back later, then we can have a shorter meeting that's far more concentrated on the outdoor processing component. So yes, they both will take time, but the inclusive Title Twenty will take more time because there's just more material to go over. Keep in mind, we do have the direction to go, go forth with amendments to the construction hour, not go forth with amendments, go forth with a public engagement component on, on construction hours as well. So we do have a lot of things that the council's provided direction on that we are undertaking as, potentially as staff. I, I did not draft the timelines for the council to review today. That is something that if you wanted the manager to, to do, I could potentially take a, and the manager wanted me to, I could potentially draft that, but I don't have that necessarily today. Like I said, I think the Title Twenty would be a six to eight-month process, and the outdoor processing would be by itself would be far, far shorter.
Mr. Mayor, I just have some clarifying, Mr. Rundle, for the alternatives. So, one of them is that city council can direct the city manager to initiate the code for the outdoor processing with public engagement or without public engagement, or we can have the city manager come back with an agenda item to consider the changes, including the outdoor processing, but then also doing the more comprehensive review, revision of Title Twenty. So what I'm hearing here, though, is Councilwoman Bybee and Councilman Dare have agreed that they would like public engagement for the outdoor processing. So I guess what I'm trying to come around to is, it may be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it could be better spent of time if we ask that the city manager put it on an agenda, the opportunities to open not only for outdoor processing, but also the revision of Title Twenty, since we have expressed the fact that we do want public engagement on the outdoor processing.
I believe that the council does have that opportunity, and that would be the discussion from the city council.
Yeah. Mr. Armando?
Mayor Lawson, members of the council, Armando Anales, Assistant Community Services Director, I just wanted to clarify one thing, and that is that the, the discussion surrounding initiating a broader set of amendments to Title Twenty is, is not an option today, per se. It's not, it's not something that the council has the option of initiating, we're, we're not agendized for that. Really, the, the point of adding that was that, was to note that if the council chooses, they could defer taking, moving forward with the amendments on the outdoor processing possible code amendment, and roll them into a larger one, but we'd have to come back to you with an agenda item for you to give us that direction, so just to be clear, you know, the, the initiation of a broader set of amendments is, is not an option for the council today. So, if, if per Councilmember Vanderwell's last comments, there's a desire to move forward with amending Title Twenty to address the outdoor process and regulations with public engagement, that is, that is your recommended motion, that is your alternative one.
Yeah. Mr. Crutts?
If, if, if that's the path we're going to go down, I want to, I want to come back and kind of highlight what Jim walked us through a bit ago, and that was the process that we used in two thousand and fifteen when we overhauled the zoning code, where we went out with issues, walked through them, collected input, took that back, drafted some proposed language, and then went back and re-engaged the public again and said, all right, based on what we've heard from everybody, here's what we're thinking, and got feedback on that, then brought that forward to you. So that's, that would constitute two rounds of, of, of meetings with, you know, with industry groups, with, with HOAs, however we want to, or we want to phrase it. So I want to make sure that, that you're understanding that that is our, as a staff, would be our, our preferred way to go collect. Um, so I want to make sure that, that your understanding that that is our, as a staff would be our, our preferred way to go collect community input.
And, uh, just from the historian point of view here, uh, once again. I remember that process being more like a couple of years, you know, from start to finish. So. It, it's not an easy process and it doesn't happen overnight. So, I mean, the. Title 20, I get it, you know, we, and we, we revised it because it was outdated, but. It took us quite a while because not only, if you're going to do it citywide. Now you have to make it available citywide also. So this, this, just be careful. There's a few questions though, for me, I would like to have answered. And probably the first one is for our, our lawyer, Mr. Duncan. Is how specific can you get on a temporary use permit? Where I'm not singling out that particular. Person or developer, because in my, if I seem to remember that we have to make this sufficiently broad enough. That anybody could fit under it in the right circumstances, but not so tight. Or turn it down because it doesn't fit in a certain category. Because, uh, we, we've just made it almost impossible to do.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just, so, so just, just to answer your question, you, you're wondering. And I mean, I think your statement is, is correct, right? We want to make sure that. Anything that we're amending in Title 20 or in, in any part of the municipal code. Uh, there's a generality that it's not. Either, uh, pinpointing one person or being too overbroad. So I mean, I think that's the process that we've worked. City Attorney's Office obviously. Works, uh, with the city manager's office, uh, hand in glove and, and trying to figure out those amendments to what that would look like. I'm not sure that answers your question though.
More than anything, I just want to make that a top of the mind awareness that we can't single anyone out. And, and the other thing that for me in this, when we bring this back. Is I'd like to know just how big a rock crusher are we going to allow? Cause those things can get to be extremely large and will crush up. Boulders that are 10, 15 feet around. So that little one that Jim showed us, that's for small rocks. There, there's much, much bigger ones on mine sites that, uh, make a lot of noise and, uh, they create a lot of dust. So I'd want to know that. And then I'd want to know what the decibel level is. And what's an acceptable decibel level from the nearest housing development during this time. So. There's, I don't expect answers. I'm just saying for next time, these are going to be the questions I'm going to ask.
Well, I would say to, to, to your point, Mr. Mayor. Um, you, you know, the council, we can amend section 20 dot zero three dot zero three zero. To have those parameters in there. So if there was. Uh, if, if it was the policy of this body to, to want to ensure that a certain decibel level wasn't present. Or that, uh, nothing over three tons, you know, a, a vehicle over three tons, whatever the policy decision of the body was. Uh, you can certainly do that. I, I think that's. Of course, this kind of gets into the province of the policy of the body, but that's why the public engagement pieces would, would certainly be important because you can kind of. Figure out what policy that, that the body wants to do in those circumstances. Uh, but certainly the parameters for section 20. Dot zero three, dot zero three, zero allows for this body to do that.
And I think the other thing for me too is I have a planned unit development that incorporates a certain boundary line. Can I put a rock crushing plant right across the line? You know, those, those are the not in my backyards for sure. So I think there's, it's, I understand the philosophy of it, but I also think that there's a slippery slope here too. And I also think that there's, uh, the public meetings are absolutely necessary and we're going to find out. In a hurry, just how receptive the population is. Mr. Dare.
So. I, I think it's, one thing I don't want to see, this to me makes sense and I, I, I don't, I don't question that we need to be careful of the unintended consequence of any decision you make. We talk about that all the time. But looking at this, if you go look at that property, where it's at, what is done, what has been in the past. And it makes sense that that would work and that we're not bringing all that traffic and all those trucks on our prop, on our streets. And so I, I want to be careful. I don't think it's a good idea to mix this all together. But again, I think you're kind of. We, we, we have a need, particular thing that somebody's asking and then we're saying, hey, that's a good idea. Let's take it and. Pull it in, make it bigger, bigger than it, you know, and fix other problems we have in the city, but it never really. Ends up helping the very people who asked for us to look at this. I, I don't think that's the right thing to do. And so, uh, to me, again, this, it makes sense that this will work. I, I understand the process. I'm not asking anybody short circuit a process by any means that. I think that would be wrong. But for, for us to add more to it, you, you pretty much. Uh, are, are figuring out then with this particular group, may, maybe they could use it, but once they. Put a home in or do any of that, then, then they aren't going to be able to do the rock crushing. They, they see they need to be there because you'll have a home right there. And so I think it's important that we keep this thing clean if we can, in the sense it's a request. And if we come in with all these other things and pile it on, then, then we pretty much just said no. Before we said yes. You said yes to somebody else in the future, but you didn't say yes to the very people asking. And I just think that's disingenuous. I, that, I don't think that's right. This is something that, um, I'd like to, to make sure it stays where it is. And again, I don't mind the process. I think the process is what it is. We have, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, I'm, I'm just not to get into an argument. I can think of at least one more aggregate area. That would make a lot of sense to, uh, have onsite processing. And I, if you're going to do it for one, you have to do it for everyone. So that, that's part of the deal that we have to be fair about. But with that, Ms. Bybee?
Yeah. Um, so I want to, want to be clear and maybe I'll go to Wes Duncan for this, what, what Mr. Ranelles, uh, already told us. This agenda item does not allow us to today. Request that the city manager and staff go back and look at amendments, further amendments to Title 20. It is on, on option number four would only, that would only happen if we deferred any action today. And we wanted the, um, crushing operations to be included in. Title 20 amendments down the line. That does give us an option. But the actual agenda item today is on the crushing operations only. So we could direct the manager to amend regulations on the outdoor processing. With public engagement or without it, but our item is the crushing only. It's not the ability. To also, and that would be, I guess, if we wanted to do that with Title 20, would that be an item? Maybe at the end of the meeting that we're asking the, um, the city manager to look at. As a further item to come back to us agendized. Am I clear on that?
It, that's correct, Councilwoman Bybee.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to be, wanted to be clear because I, it's not two motions on this. Item, this item is only on the crushing, on the outdoor processing. Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm sorry. So just, yeah, just to clarify, I mean, the way that, that our item was agendized. You know, obviously these two sections fall under Title 20. Um, but we didn't talk about Title 20 as a whole. So to him to. We're, we're specifically talking about the outdoor processing and point, uh, point zero three, zero. And then temporary uses in point zero four, zero. So. That, i- if we want to talk more broadly about Title 20, we should. Put an agenda item for the future and talk about that. But we, we have to just remain narrow because that's what has been agendized.
Okay. Any further discussion questions, Ms. Vanderwell?
Okay. I, Councilman Dare, I'm going to have to agree with the mayor because in reading the motion. Um, in initiating it, we would allow, um, crush rocking operations. In residentially zoned land of approved projects. So it's not just this one project. So any other projects that are residentially approved that need to do rock crushing can then do it. So, um. I just have a hard time with that.
Mr. Dare.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I, that is true. There's not, there's no way to give, we're not giving. Anybody the right to do something that other people, that would, it's not what we do at all for any of our, any of our policies. To me, that's, that's a given, but it has to do with our staff's involvement of making sure it fits the criteria that can work. There are other areas that this, this might be a thing as we get more land, as we do different things. This is, this is not. Uh, that's not the question in my mind is that it's only for this group. I, I understand that. And I guess. I guess you could say no to one because you're worried about. Having to say no to somebody because it doesn't fit their criteria. But I do think there's other criteria out there that could potentially fit it. And that's why they're doing a study. That's why they're going to bring it back. And do the work on it. I'm not here saying we just approve it. I, I don't, I couldn't tell you what I'm fully approving at this point. Except the idea that we look at it. And I, I mean, I think I'm right. I think I read the, the motion correctly. So it's not that I'm, we're, we're giving, this is, we're right now giving this permission. We're, we're saying move forward, have, have the community involvement, do the thing we talked about. And let's see where it goes. I'm just saying pulling it together with other things, adding other things to it. I, I think that's not what I meant. I, I want to keep it. This, and then it'll have a life of it is, if it comes back and in the end we decide it shouldn't be done, then it shouldn't, then that's what we decide, right? I, that's what we get to do as a city council. But I think letting our staff have at it. Let them look at it. Let us see what's the best thing, but. I think I, I'm one, and I, again, it's not just me. This is things we've said. So these are, these are, these are priorities we all talk about. We, we, we are not, we want to be user friendly to our construction. Constituents. We want all these things. However, we want to protect our public. We always are looking for this balance. I'm just asking us to go see if we have that balance. That's, that's really what I'm doing. And so, uh, please know I, I, the process will be what it is. And in the end, it definitely is not just for five ridges. That would be wrong. It would be for anybody else. It needs to be able to fit. And now there's some people who won't fit in that parameters. Charlie and Bybee mentioned in her word, there's a group that would not fit in the parameters of where you're going to want rock crushing, period. That's easy. And now if we are saying, if we say yes to them, we have to say yes to that group. I don't get that. That makes no sense to me. We have a lot of policies that don't function that way. So I'm not saying we do that by any means, but to me, the suggested motion makes sense to me. The staff sees is the suggestion from them. I think I. And I do think it's something for us to, it makes sense.
So is there a motion in there? You want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. Let me go back to it because it just flew off my screen. And I'll read. The motion they wrote. I think I like it. So. I, here's my motion. I move to direct the city manager to initiate changes. Twenty point oh three, oh three, oh, outdoor processing and then SMC twenty. Point oh three, oh four, zero temporary uses of the Sparks Municipal Code. To allow temporary rock and concrete crush, crushing operations on residentially zoned land. Associated with appropriate project. The process is to include public engagement prior to their first reading of them.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Anderson has a second. Do I have any further discussion? Further discussion, Ms. Bybee?
Uh, you can let Mr. Abbott go first.
Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, um, Jim, is there any, would we ever do something like a project like on, doing like street rehab or? Is there anything like that where we'd be crushing rock as a city?
I, I can't say yes or no to that. I don't know the answer.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
I, I'll, 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 I'll wander into the middle of that one. There are kind of mobile recycling plants that will chew up existing asphalt, concrete. And process it and put it right back down. That would be considered somewhat of a subset of this. We haven't seen a lot of that kind of work in Northern Nevada. Um, but it is a, a somewhat of a possibility. That, uh, that, that somebody's going to look at, at that kind of setup and say, well, that just looks like, that looks just like the picture that Jim showed us. In 2021, only it's on wheels and it's moving slowly. Um, so it, so that possibility is out there.
So with that, currently we would not allow that, like going down Prater with residential on both sides or?
But council, Councilman Abbott, the, there is a difference between right of way and real property. And the Title 20 regulates what we call real property. So it has zoning on it. The right of way does not have zoning on it. So those do fall under different regulations than our Title 20 governance.
Okay, thank you.
And just a comment for me is that aggregate pit mining is a mining activity and when the, from the first shovel full. You have to restore it back to its original condition. So there is, there is that part of it too. So that might, should be part of our homework we do, Mr. Rundle. So, all right, Ms. Bybee. We're still.
So yeah, comment on the motion on the floor. So the motion to have the city manager. Initiate changes. City manager and staff. Those specific changes and what they include still have to come back to us for approval. So you could go pursue it, come back to us and we could say. You've covered it all. I feel good about this. Or we could say, still not okay. Still, you know, here are my concerns or another council member's concerns. That, that some of us could still have. So this is simply allowing you and staff. To go look at what those changes may be, what the temporary use conditions would be for the permitting. So that it doesn't open it up to every residential neighborhood right now. Because this would be determined in much your conditions of the temporary use permit would be, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Yeah, it would still, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to add if extra information to that question that? Councilwoman Bybee, that's correct. So this is simply, it starts the bill. Essentially, it would have to come back. We would take it through our planning commission. Outside of all the other work that would be done for a recommendation to the council and the council would have the opportunity. Uh, to, to, to deny, remand, modify, approve, all of those different things. Uh, that, uh, that you're accustomed to on a, on a code amendment.
Okay, Ms. Vanderwell.
Okay, I, I'm not going to support the motion because all of us are getting requests and staff has said they have a list. Of requests to change amendments in Title 20. And I just feel that, um. This is just a, a continual use of staff's time that if maybe we directed the city manager. To put on an agenda so that we could discuss Title 20 and the list of amendments that have come into community development. That would be a better use of staff's time.
Okay, any further comments, Mr. Anderson?
Sorry, we're, we're beating this one pretty good here, but I, I actually want to go along with what Diane said, but again, what I heard was the last time. We went through and changed Title 20, it took a year or more to make that change, correct?
I think it was a couple of years.
Yeah. And I, I guess that's my concern. If this is something, whether it's the, you know, the construction hours or, or crushing rock. And that now we're years down, down the road. I, I just, I have concerns about that and I do appreciate. The staff time that is going to be involved in this. I, I guess I'm conflicted with the fact that, hey, you know, industry, yeah, we're looking at it, but we'll get back to you in a couple of years.
Well, I think what Mr. Rundle said was it doesn't necessarily have to take that long. Remember, we took the entire code back then. And redid it from literally from start to finish. But we're talking about several items. It should be a lot faster. But anyway, so any other comments or questions? So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further last time? Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes four to one in favor. Thank you. Good discussion, gang. That was, uh, well done. Okay, so let's move on. And now you have your work cut out for you, Mr. Rundle. You can do it though. All right, uh, nine point four, consideration discussing a possible approval of the impact fee credit agreement. Number 25 is AC five seven, three, five between the city of Sparks. And DR Horton, eight granting two hundred sixty two thousand, three hundred ninety four dollars and forty nine cent. Impact, impact fee credits that may be used for any future regional parks and recreation impact fees within the. Impact, impact fee credits that may be used for any future regional parks and recreation impact fees within the. Impact fee service area number one. Mister Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, John Erickson, city engineer for the record. Um, I'm going to share my screen if I may.
Please.
Is the the exhibit up on your screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, D R Horton has constructed thirty one hundred lineal feet of Spanish Springs Regional Trail. Included in the capital improvements plan for impact fee service area number one. Um, it's outlined in blue on the exhibit, um, on your, on your screen. Per the terms of the general administrative manual for I F S A number one. The developer is entitled to impact fee credits that may be used to pay for I F S A number one fees for future building permits. Within I F S A number one. Staff has inspected the improvement and reviewed the cost of the constructive facility and has determined the improvements in costs to be acceptable. Should the impact fee agreement number twenty five be approved by city council? D R Horton will be granted two hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and ninety four dollars and forty nine cents. Of I F S A number one regional park and rec credits that may be used to pay any future regional park and rec fee. Within I F S A number one. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions from the coun- the council. I just happened to see Lake Martini right there. That just makes me smile, I'm sorry. Questions from the council. Nobody? Okay. Oh, there he is, Mister Dare.
I I can make a motion if you'd like.
Okay, please.
I'm not mistaken, right, Charlene? That's my word. It's still mine. I'm not yours. It's yours.
We get confused a little bit right in there. A lot of new stuff going in, but uh. I move to approve impact fee credit agreement number twenty five, A C five seven three five between the city of Sparks and D R Horton Incorporated granting two hundred sixty. Two thousand, three hundred ninety four dollars and forty nine cents. Impact fee credits that may be used for any future regional parks and recreation impact fees within I F S A number one.
I'll second it. Vanderwell?
Second from Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Mister Erickson. Okay, moving on, nine point six. Consideration discussing a possible adoption of resolution number three, three, seven, zero. Establishing a special revenue fund called the Landscape Maintenance Fund. To account for landscaping maintenance fees for the prominory, Mason Meadows and Triple Crown subdivisions. And Mister Ornalis, wait.
If I was, did you just read the title for nine point six?
I guess I did.
Okay, I think we're on. We're on nine point five, right?
Well, you got around nine point five, I'm on nine point six. Get on the same page with you guys. Review and possible approval of a grant amendment, A C five seven three six to accept CARES Act Community Development Block Grant. Funds in the amount of three hundred nine thousand, three hundred sixty seven dollars. Awarded to the city of Sparks by the Nevada Governor's Office of Economic Development. Go Ed to prevent, prepare for and respond to the COVID nineteen virus with possible direction to the city manager. To seek Go Ed approval to use the C D B G funds. To provide rental assistance for Sparks residents adversely impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the Spark City Council. It's Armando Ornalis, the Assistant Community Services Director, and I am relieved not to have to try to tackle nine point six, so. Uh, with that. Earlier this month, uh, Mayor Lawson received notice from the Nevada. Governor's Office of Economic Development, which is commonly referred to as Go Ed. That the city had been awarded Community Development Block Grant Funds from the twenty twenty CARES Act. Uh, these are again, uh, CARES Act monies that are funneled through the C D B G program. Uh, in the amount of three hundred nine thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars. Uh, the city council may either accept or opt out of award of these grant funds. This agenda item is asking the council to take two actions. The first is to approve the grant agreement to accept the funding. And then the second is to provide direction to the city manager regarding the use of the funds and more specifically to. Uh, provide, direct the city manager to proceed with uh submitting an application to Go Ed to use the funds for rental assistance. Uh, just as background and as a reminder, the C D B G C V funding, like all CARES Act money, must be used to support activities for the. Uh, prevention of, preparation for and response to the coronavirus. And then the C D B G monies in addition have the additional requirement that they must benefit low and moderate income persons. If the city council chooses today to accept the C D G, C D B G C V monies from Go Ed. Uh, it can draw the funds beginning during fiscal year twenty two. Uh, which starts on July one. However, prior to that. Uh, the city has to submit and receive approval from Go Ed for an application that specifies how the monies are to be used. And then, uh, there's ample time to spend these monies. We have until August of twenty twenty three to expend eighty percent of the dollars, so. Uh, we don't have the same um sort of pressure in terms of timelines to expand these dollars that we did. Or at least we thought we did when, uh, we were at this stage with the other C D B G monies last year. The staff report outlines, you know, the the various uses that, uh, the monies can be used for. Um, in some respects, uh, some of the capital projects that are options. Um, get harder and harder to make the tie to the coronavirus preparation or response. Um, and so staff spoke to, reached out to the executive director for the Rent Housing Authority, Amy Jones. And conferred with her as to whether there was interest on R H A's part about resuming the provision of residential rental assistance to our residents. Um, Ms. Jones responded that the R H A is in fact interested in in doing so again. Uh, and Ms. Jones believes that there will be community need for rental assistance, uh, certainly in the second half of twenty twenty one and probably beyond. Uh, they have maintained the cap, the capacity to per, uh, to administer this type of program. And in fact, they are, uh, planning to, uh, administer funds for the state in Washoe County. Uh, so staff is therefore recommending that the city council approve the grant agreement with Go Ed to accept the funds. In addition, direct the, uh, city manager to proceed with, uh, submitting an application to Go Ed. Uh, to use the funds for residential rental assistance. And that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions you may have.
Questions from the council?
Mister Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mister Ornalis, on those funds, ki- I, are any of those funds going to be used for staff? Um, or are they gonna be able to be directly to, um, for rental assistance?
So, uh, the the past agreement with, uh, R H A allowed them to use ten percent for their administrative costs. Uh, to disperse the funds. Uh, cities, none of those funds would be used, uh, for city staff costs and in fact cannot be per the terms of the C D B G regs.
I think, I, I thank you, I, to clarify, I meant for I H A staff, uh, because if I remember correctly in my notes. Um, the average cost to, for each renter was about fifty seven hundred dollars. Uh, so if we take ten percent off of that, we're gonna limit it down to maybe fifty additional families that we can assist. So I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mister Dare?
So I I have questions because part of it, we we watched this go through before. And I just wanna know if there are any other options. And I say that not because in, if anything there, but. We had a lot of different things that I wondered, sometimes things that went slow. And it's obviously COVID, so we give a lot of room for people to figure things out. But my question, like, like even making sure paperwork is followed through with and things of that fashion, do we have anybody to compare with to see if there's? Uh, something that's easier for our people to get through and use? Or is this the only answer we have? Or, and I just asked that because I, you know, I I wanna make sure we're having. The 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 best bang for our buck, the best for our community. And yes, we did see some people helped, but. There's also a lot of people we know went through the paperwork, got messed up and and things that didn't happen. And so. I don't know, it's a question on my brain and I just throw it out there to see, is there another, another option we can look at just to compare? What they're doing to this. And maybe this is the best option for us, but I don't know if there's another option that actually gives us. A a better return, I don't know, or helps more people or use our money more wisely.
So, uh, to your question about other options, uh, I, you know, we, I'm I'm at a, you know, readily aware of another option. I mean. You know, R H A has been the entity in Washoe County that has administered funds. Uh, for the state, for, uh, unincorporated Washoe County, uh, through. Uh, for, uh, for the city of Reno and and for the city of Sparks. Um, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to go out and see, you know, if there are. I mean, I think, you know, if 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 the council, uh. Did not want to go the route of R H, of using R H A again. Um, what I think the the manager would advise is go ahead and accept the grant, uh, and and, you know, get the agreement into. Uh, Go Ed, but then, uh, you know, the direction would be to, uh, presumably then to the manager to 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 evaluate. Other options. I'm not aware of any readily. Uh, I think that, uh, I will note that, you know. R H A did ultimately use all of the C D B G funds that they received from the city in twenty twenty. Uh, they made it a priority to use the already, the C D B G funds because those were the ones that were most restricted, restrictive in terms of their use. Um, they ultimately used about. Uh, sixty percent of the two million dollars are allocated from CARES Act money, uh, and they certainly felt that they, you know, had they had more time. They would have been able to disperse more of those funds. Uh, in part, their interest in in, uh, you know, administering these funds is to go back to some of those people on their, on their list who. Uh, probably still, you know, owe back rent, uh, even if they're making payments currently. Um, and try to assist, you know, if it's fifty or sixty additional families, um, another, another group of families or households.
Sorry, one word on that, then I just say if if this is the only thing in place and. And you know, sometimes be the only thing in place, it's hard to come in and know how well somebody's doing. That's part of. Why we get more than one bid and more than one everything. But I would say that if if this is really the only one, I I. I would like to know some of the lessons they learned in the last round and how they plan to do some, uh, and really shore that up. Because we, we talked about a lot of different times where I I watched, we were all in the conversation. They were swimming uphill and again, COVID, all I get it, all the reasons, I'm not, I'm not even bad talking nothing, but the reality of the. Have we fixed those things? Are we gonna be able to run as clean as we can? Um, can we help as many people as possible? Anyway, I I I'd say if this is the only way to go that I'd. I I'd like to hear the lessons learned and what the things they're going to be able to. Go after. Because I I I do, I mean, I heard stuff that it wasn't even this meeting from multiple people, some of the difficulty of even. Yeah, getting back with them sometimes. And I mean, it's hard to know what's, who, you know, was it? The client, was it the R H A? I don't, I don't know, but I, but I heard it enough that it makes me wonder, it's probably both. So those are my concerns, but to look at.
Well, one, one, uh, one comment, um, you know, I think the. If the council follows the, uh, recommendation from staff, um, the next step would be, the next two steps would of course would be to. You know, accept the agreement and and send it off to Go Ed. And then secondly, to, um, say, to to submit an application to Go Ed saying we intend to use it for rental assistance. Uh, ultimately, um, if we are going to utilize R H A for this purpose. Uh, we would need to bring, uh, an agreement, a contract between the city and R H A back to the city council for the council's approval. And, uh, you know, there would be another opportunity to have that discussion. With R H A before, uh, you approved, ultimately approved an agreement. So there's several steps here. The advantage, if you will, that we have here is that, uh, we we're not under the same time pressures. That we were on, under last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss Bybee?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, actually, I would disagree with Councilman Dare because I think R H A did an amazing job. You know, we all know from COVID and how all of us had to step back and really. Reimagine how we took care of our community, how we responded to the pandemic. And I think. R H, R H A, uh, stepped up. I think the difficulties they had from what. Um, when Amy responded, you know, came in and reported to us, some of those people whose applications were not completed. Uh, were people who found out they weren't eligible. Some of them never got back with. You know, Reno Housing Authority to complete their paperwork or to give the documentation that they needed. So I feel like because they know. The problems some of the applicants had makes them a better position. To know when someone walks in the door or to take those people that were on the list already and go back to them and say, hey. Do you have documentation you need now? And this is how we can help you get it. So I think they are on task. To do, um, the job and to do it very efficiently. We're talking three hundred nine thousand dollars. So as Councilwoman. Vanderwal mentioned, we're looking at what fifty families maybe, but that's fifty families. And I think that. The rental assistance is the number one thing that people are still gonna continue to need because, um. As Mister Ornalis pointed out, maybe people are back to work and they're paying their rent now, but they have all that back rent. Which also filters down to those, you know, to the, uh, the owners of those, you know, the property owners. The building owners who've been sitting here with property that that didn't have rent paid during this whole moratorium. So I think. Uh, R H A has learned a lot. I think they did a good job, but I think they can do an even better job. And, um, I think we want it done quickly. So to go out and look for something else and and to take time to do that. Uh, doesn't make sense to me, I think, uh, accepting the money and then, um. Contracting again with R H A to get it out to our residents as quickly as we can would be what I support today. Thank you.
Is that, if you wanna make a motion?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Vanderwell?
Um, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Bybee and agree with Councilman Dare. Um, there are other nonprofits in the state that did do, did do this. A little more effectively and faster. And just as due to their size and they were able to be nimble. Uh, there is a local organization that got a half a million dollars out in less than thirty days to a hundred and five families for rental assistance. So I just, I think it's just important that we sit and we look and we ask Ms. Jones to come back. Like Councilman Dare had asked, um, you know, what were the pain points that you found? That you maybe now have systems in place that things can happen quicker?
Okay, looking for a motion? Mister Anderson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, but before I do, I just wanna say, yes, I think there could be better options out there. But, I mean, R H A has has been doing this. Um, I think it's more important that that time. Is is, uh. Short for a lot of these people that are, it's it's a matter of whether or not they're gonna be able to stay in their homes. So I I personally believe we should move forward. The nice way that this is worded in the the recommended motion is that. It doesn't tie us into just one, one option. Um, so the fact that it's gonna be coming back for us with a contract, that's, that's why I wanna support it. So with that, um, I move to approve the grant agreement, A C five seven three six. To accept CARES Act Community Development Block Grant C D B G C V funds. In the amount of three hundred nine thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars. Awarded to the city of Sparks by the Nevada Government Office of Economic Development. To prevent, prepare for, respond to COVID nineteen virus. And to direct the city manager to seek Go Ed approval to use the C D B G C V funds. To provide rental assistance to Sparks residents adversely impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic.
Okay, looking for a second, Mister Dare?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Bybee?
Um, I, uh, support the motion and I do appreciate, uh, Councilman Anderson's pointing out. That we are accepting the grant and we're agreed to use it for rental assistance. And we can make that decision on the rental assistance. Uh, who does that, how quickly we can get it out, when that agreement comes back to us. So I'm in full support of the motion. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Okay, now are you guys prepared to catch up with me on nine point six? Consideration discussing a possible adoption of resolution number three, three, seven, zero, establishing a special revenue fund. Called the Landscape Maintenance Fund to account for landscaping maintenance fees in the pro- for the prominory. Mason Meadows and Triple Crown subdivisions. Yeah. Hi, Debbie.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm going to take these items for Jeff. And I'm the accounting manager and I'll be presenting the next five items on the agenda. Which are resolutions that are required for financial management. The first four are related to changing requirements and the changing reporting requirements, and the last one is needed to update and streamline our processes. And because some of these tend to build on each other, I'll be looking for a separate motion for each item as we go along, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, the first item in nine point six is a resolution to establish a new fund. And under governmental reporting, there are three categories of funds, governmental, proprietary and fiduciary. Since nineteen ninety four, activity related to landscape maintenance agreements for the. Mesa Meadows Promontory and Triple Crown subdivisions have been reported as fiduciary. Uh, the governmental accounting standards board issued new guidance and under their new guidance, these activities no longer qualify as fiduciary activities. So in order to properly report them, we'll need to establish a governmental fund. A special revenue fund is appropriate for recording this activity and, uh, therefore I'm asking you to approve the resolution to establish a special revenue fund. Called the Landscape Maintenance Fund, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that.
Question from the council. Ms. Bybee.
Um, and Debbie, I don't know that you can answer this, but maybe, uh, staff can, just to refresh my memory on. The, the funds for this landscape maintenance. Uh, I know it's kind of a different situation than we find in the rest of the city where other HOAs are managing this. Um, can someone just briefly refresh me on, are these funds being paid by the homeowners? In these divisions, I believe they are, and how the city is actually responsible, maybe Debbie, you can answer us how. Why the city is responsible for the allocation, uh, and accounting of these funds for what would be three HOAs.
Right, of those developments, those subdivisions never had HOAs created, they were in the development phase. Instead, they entered into an agreement with the, the city to provide the maintenance of those common areas along the roadways. Um, the homeowners are charged through their sewer bills, a landscape maintenance fee. And I believe the percentage is sixty seven percent is paid by homeowners, but there is a portion that is paid by the city. I can get that specific amount later, but I don't have it on top of my head.
Okay, I was just, I wanted to refresh her on, it was an unusual. Agreement that I don't think we see anywhere else in the city, and I was just kind of racking my brain to remember what. What, what the situation was with that because it was different than we see, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other question? Don, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to adopt resolution number three, three, seven, zero, establishing a special revenue fund called the Landscape Maintenance Fund. To account for landscape maintenance fees for the Promontory, Mesa Meadows and Triple Crown subdivisions.
I'll second.
And the second from Ms. Bybee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, most carries unanimously. Okay.
Nice.
Let's move on to nine point seven, consideration, discussion of possible adoption of resolution number three, three, seven, one. To abolish Promontory Mesa Meadows and Triple Crown Landscape Maintenance Trust Funds. Debbie.
Thank you, once again, since you've approved creating the special revenue fund, we will transfer all of the balances that are in the fiduciary funds to the new fund. And that'll render the three landscape maintenance funds obsolete. Therefore, we're looking to abolish the Mesa Meadows Promontory and Triple Crown fiduciary funds. That's my presentation.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Here, and I'm pulling up, I moved to adopt resolution number three, three, seven, one to abolish. Promontory Mesa Meadows and Triple Crown Landscape Maintenance Trust Funds.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Anderson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, most carries unanimously, all right. Okay, nine point eight. Considerous discussion of possible adoption of resolution number three, three, seven, two. Authorizing the expansion of the purpose, sources and uses of the road fund and capital projects fund to the city of Sparks. Ms. Debbie.
Hi, Ken, Debbie Kinder, County Manager. This resolution will expand the purpose of the road fund to accommodate collection of the Regional Transportation Commission impact fees. And in ninety six, the activity related to the fees has been reported. In accordance with our Sparks Munich Code within a fiduciary fund. And the revised definitions per governmental reporting standards now prevent the activity from being classified as fiduciary. Therefore, we're going to need to report those activities in a governmental fund, and the currently existing capital projects road fund is a good fit for that pass-through activity. The impact fees will be tracked separately in trust for the RTC within the road fund and the resources or the. Money from those fees won't be available as resources for our road projects. The road fund sources and purpose were established by resolution in ninety seven, and we need to extend, expand that purpose in order to accommodate the impact fees. I'm asking that you approve the resolution to expand the purpose of the road fund to accommodate those fees. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, questions from the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to adopt resolution number three, three, seven, two, to op- authorize expanding the per- uh, the purpose, sources and uses of road fund. A capital projects fund of the city of Sparks.
Okay, looking for a second.
Second.
Second from Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, most carries unanimously. All right, nine point nine, consideration, discussion of possible adoption of resolution number three, three, seven, three. To abolish the RTC Road Impact Fund, a fiduciary, a fiduciary fund. Debbie, you're up.
Hi, Debbie Kinder, again, that title pretty much says it all, we are going to transfer the balances from the. Fiduciary fund to the governmental fund, rendering it obsolete, so looking for, um, uh. Motion to abolish the road, sorry, not the road fund, the RTC Road Impact Fee Fund.
So, uh, yeah, Mr. Dare.
I can make that motion.
Thank you.
Uh, make sure I have the right one here, we're at nine point eight, right?
Yeah, nine point nine.
Nine point nine, sorry. Thought it was awful.
You're just a little slower than I am today.
Not, I'm working on it. I moved to adopt resolution number three, three, seven, three, to abolish the RTC Road Impact Fund, a fiduciary fund.
Okay, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I can admit.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries unanimously, all right, nine point one zero. Considerous discussion of possible adoption of a resolution number three, three, seven, five, authorizing the establishment. Of an impressive, of impressed accounts for petty cash. Change cash and investigation evidence cash accounts. And setting the limits and procedures for the use by the city departments, and you're back up Debbie.
I am, the final line, so this resolution will update our impressed account processes. The last resolution to establish these processes was approved in nineteen ninety. And the resolution before you today will specifically identify the three types of accounts that we have, the petty cash, change cash and evidence and. And, uh, investigation cash. The resolution will also update the per item spending limits for each of those accounts. And it will reduce the number of senior management signatures that are required to establish new accounts or to make changes to custodians of this existing accounts. Now with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, questions from the council? All right, looking for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I moved to adopt resolution number three, three, seven, five, authorizing the establishment of impressed accounts. For petty cash, change cash and investigation evidence cash accounts. And setting limits and procedures for their use by city departments.
Okay, second, anyone?
I'll second Vanderwell.
Second by Vanderwell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most carries unanimously. Thank you Debbie.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
All right, uh, we don't have any public hearing, we don't have any planning and zoning. We have comments from the public, Madam Clerk.
If anybody wishes to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand function on your Zoom app.
We don't have the Jeopardy theme, that would be nice.
I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, comments from the mayor, city council, city manager. Anybody? We were a talkative group today, Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, um, I'm just trying to let everyone know, I'm going to fire up a project, it's called Shamrock for Seniors. And we did Valentine for seniors for February and, uh, we're just trying to give out our, um, no, trying to get Shamrock's made. And, uh, you go down to Spark Museum, you can get them made there, and if you go down to the museum, you can check out our exhibits on our sister city. The city of Sparks, sister city of Longford, Ireland, so we're just talking about some Irish heritage and, uh, just trying to get the Irish, um. Information out there about, you know, about our, our ties in Longford Park and Ward Two and the Vanderwell Ward and, uh. Just get that out there and also get these positive messages to seniors as well as we're, we'll put them around, hopefully Oskies and like the museum. So if anyone's interested, you can reach out to me and I'm, I'm literally about to fire it up after this meeting, so.
Mr. Dare.
I also want to say congratulations to Donald for being the Shamrock Man of the Year or something that he won and. So if you don't know that, it's true, this is a real trophy he got and, uh, so he, uh, is, is Mr. Ireland or something like that, so. Good job.
Irish, Irish personality, yeah, thank you.
Um, but is this, is this where you would want us to request a conversation regarding Title Twenty?
Yes.
Did I hear? Okay. Uh, I, I don't, I just requested we could bring back the conversation of Title Twenty and if we think is, is wisdom or wise. To open that up and make some changes.
Okay. Mr. Crouches.
Mr. Mayor, on the back of that, if we can also have staff bring the list of amendment requests that have come, so we don't have to do it in two meetings, please.
Is that possible, Mr. Manager?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Consider it done. Okay, anyone else? All right, good meeting, y'all, all right, we're gonna go to our number thirteen, our favorite topic, adjournment. We are now adjourned, thank you.
Okay, don't go, anyone? Anyone leave, we are, I'm going to call to order the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting of Monday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one. Was the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Chairperson Bybee.
Here.
Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting Chief Legal Officer Duncan.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crouches.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, going to item three, public comment, do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
If anybody wishes to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. We'll give them just a moment, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I'm showing none at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, moving on to item four, uh, four point one, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda is presented?
Move to approve?
I have a motion by agency member Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by agency member Dare. Any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, item five point one, minutes, consideration, discussion. Possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting in January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, do I have any corrections, additions or emotion? To approve?
Madam Chair. Mm-hmm. I move to approve the Sparks redevelopment agent, agency meeting minutes for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
Uh, thank you, I have a motion by agency member Vanderwell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I know this is hard, um, I have a second by agency member Dare. Um, any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, item six point one, business items. Consideration and possible acceptance of the reports of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers. For the period of January seventh, twenty twenty one through February third, twenty twenty one, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Uh, the motion, I have a motion by agency member Anderson, um, do I have a second for item six point one? Agency member Abbott, okay, agency member Abbott, I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, item seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
If anybody would like to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item seven point two, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer, do I any, have any comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the.
Bye.
See ya.
Thank you.